Back to session. We're still waiting for Council Martin, but I'm sure he'll be here momentarily. For council members, those with microphones, remember to turn them on. We are now live with our webcasting as far as at least recording, and hopefully we'll have a successful recording so we can actually upload it.
Madam Mayor, they are up on the website.
Are they?
They are. You can go look at yourself.
I know, Marcy's been having a lot of trouble. Yeah, we'll talk about that one a little bit later. Anyways, looking for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carried. We have in our audience tonight a young gentleman who has been nominated as part of our Callwood Pay It Forward program. So I would like to call Thomas forward, and it is with great honor that we present this to you. I did have another piece of paper here. Sam, it's missing. Sort of the... Yeah, is that the one? Wow, there we are. Anyways, we will do this. Thomas has been, over the last three years, raising funds for autism. And he has raised over $200 this year in a penny drive, I understand. Yes? So we would like to present with to you, and I'm going to come around that side. It's always a great pleasure to acknowledge the youth in our community who work out there outside their own comfort zones and do things for the betterment of the community. So congratulations, Thomas. It is the time for public participation. So if there's anyone in the audience that has something that they would like to have council take note of, we welcome them at the podium. Please do state your name and address for our recorder. And if you have any written materials that you want to hand over, Sam will be happy to take that. So I will call once for any public participation. A second time. And just a reminder, if there's any topic of interest in the agenda, the time for speaking is now to those items, and they will not be spoken to in the duration of the meeting. Third and final time. Moving forward, mayor's message. I really don't have anything to add today other than our new website has been rolled out. It is actually live, and we encourage the public to take a look at it, and there is an opportunity there to offer your comments. It's not perfect. We're still in looking for that engagement. So feel free to make your comments, and we can get it corrected. Moving on to adoption of minutes of the regular meeting of council June the 10th.
Move adoption?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Looking to receive a number of minutes this evening. Callwood Heritage Advisory Commission, April 10th. Joint Finance and Admin Committee with Transportation and Public Infrastructure, May 6th. Parks, Recreation and Culture, April 15th. Planning and Land Use Committee, May 21st. Planning and Land Use, June 4th. Protective Services, May 8th. St. John the Baptist Church Management, April 29th. St. John the Baptist Church Centennial Committee, June 3rd. And yeah, that's all those for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Looking for adoption of the report of the public hearing, June the 10th.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Number 6, 6.1 Finance and Admin. 6.1 Discussion with KPMG in regards to audit findings and financial statements for 2013. Lenora? Thanks.
Thank you for the opportunity to discuss again for results we're awaiting.
Is the mic on? You might have to turn it on.
There's a little button at the bottom.
Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. The audit findings report has been pre-distributed and has been discussed in camera with council tonight. The highlights of our audit findings are included within this report. And as of tonight, the audit is substantially complete, pending a few items that are typical at this point in time, including approval of the financial statements and receipt of the management representation letter. The highlights of our audit are included within. The materiality level set for this year's audit was $275,000, which relates to overall financial statement materiality. The level of testing we perform is to a lower threshold, and cumulatively, we found no material misstatements. And as such, our independent auditor's report is drafted as a clean audit opinion. In terms of the financial reporting risks, we've identified a summary of our audit approach, which is primarily substantive in nature. We have tested controls around the payroll process and the budget establishment and monitoring process, and have found no significant control deficiencies or significant weaknesses to comment on in this audit findings report. The two items highlighted in our report here relate to the Capital Road project, indicating that there are some accounts receivable recorded in the financial statements pending to be collected. Also, in the normal course of our audit and routine with every audit, we make inquiries as to litigation matters and legal matters outstanding. We're also comfortable that the city has appropriately recorded any potential liability for litigation and future settlement in future years. As at December 31st, 2012, there was no accrual setup and no potential liability established for future settlement costs. We've commented on the significant qualitative aspects of the audit. The accounting policies have remained consistent on a year-to-year basis, and there were no changes to the accounting standards in the current year. There was also no significant changes to the estimates or disclosures within the financial statements in comparison to previous years. We've provided in our management representation letter the corrected and uncorrected misstatements that were noted as part of the audit process. There were no uncorrected misstatements that we determined were material to the financial statements as a whole. And as such, like I mentioned, the auditor's opinion is not impacted by any uncorrected adjustments. The remainder of our audit findings report are the appendices, which I won't go through in detail. However, our independent auditor's report as drafted is included. Our independence letter is also included, which indicates that we have been independent throughout the course of the year as well as in the conduct of our audit. A copy of the management representation letter is included, which we'll obtain prior to the release and finalization of the financial statements. The current developments in terms of accounting standards are included, which indicate some of the future developments that will impact the accounting and preparation of the financial statements. Lastly, is the engagement letter, which indicates the terms of our engagement and the term for which we have been engaged. Those are the summaries, findings, and highlights of our audit.
Questions, comments from council? Seeing none. Counselor Day?
Thank you. I just had one quick question for you, and I am looking at the notes to the non-consolidated financial statements and the principal payments for long-term debt over the next five years. And it's pretty consistent for 2013 through 2016, but in 2017, it goes down fairly significantly from $723,000 per year to $667,000 per year. And I was just wondering why there was a change in that one year? I'm guessing maybe it's the end of a five-year timeframe, but...
It would be a maturity in terms of long-term debt, and so the 2017 year represents a decrease for that maturity.
Thank you, Your Worship. We have some of our store debt is maturing in the next two to three years.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Counselor Collington?
Just a comment to say thank you very much to our finance staff and to our auditors for an excellent job. This looks great.
I'd like to echo the same comments to management. Thanks very much for all your assistance, and we really appreciate all your support in our audit process.
Thank you very much, Lenora. Staff?
Thank you, Your Worship. I wanted to kind of take this into a different area, which is more in line with my expertise instead of auditing. But to start off, I thought it was important the public record have noted that this financial statement audit come forward a lot later than expected or planned, my experience. And someone said to me, there are excuses and there are reasons. And in this case, there are a number of reasons. Probably most obvious is my vision problems, most council well aware of, which have prevented me from being able to stare at numbers, which is not good. But we also have been very short staff, and we've had a bit of turnover. And on the other side, through our auditors, we also have illness with our audit lead and the audit manager. And then the audit manager decided to take a job somewhere else. So it's been a bit of a challenge to get this to you, and so I apologize very much for the long delay, but there were reasons. One of the things I want to highlight is clean audit opinion, which is, in our world, a yay, because it means that you're doing everything right and that our independent auditors also agree. So our auditors report that they have no significant financial statement reporting risk or significant control deficiencies. Now, in auditing world, that mean within a reasonable level. For us, we always feel the room for improvement. So we're going to continue to identify areas that we believe can be better so that next year audit even better than this year. Other thing council should be aware of is that the financial statement that you look at to your agenda is consolidated with WSPR, which really lower our results in some area. And it should be noted that the budget in the statements that you are looking at exclude amortization expense, but the actuals do not. So while it look like we're very over our expenditure budget, we're not really. Our net debt from 2011 to 2012 decreased by $2.55 million, which had an impact on our net surplus, excuse me, of $2.11 million. These very good results considering where community have been in the past. Our revenue in 2012 was 5% over budget and not from taxation. Note nine on page 17 of your consultancy statement show all the detail. We get small community grant, et cetera, a solar callaway grant increase. And its revenues, 2.8 million over 2011, or 17% increase. Expenditure budget, of course, it include amortization, but if you take this out, it was just slightly over the budget by about 1%. And there were some reasons for this equipment kind of get condemned through the year. We have to buy new stuff. And over 2011 is up about 2%. Our reserves are now close to $6 million, almost $2 million higher than 2011. 48% backed up by cash and investment in excess of $16.5 million, which is up $2.75 million over 2011, or our cash and investment are up 20% over 2011, which is very good considering economy. In just one year, we moved from a deficit of close to half a million dollar, including amortization, up to $2.1 million surplus, including amortization. So I just want to thank this council for the direction and vision that you have given the community, provides some financial stability coming forward.
Thank you. Counselor Harvey?
Thank you. I think that's really, really important contextual information for us to have and for our public to have. And I would strongly encourage you to put that report front and center on our website when we post, if we haven't already posted, our audit findings. I found it extremely informative and helpful, and I want to thank you.
To you.
Madam Chair, if you remember back probably 2010, 2009, when we had no money in our reserves at all, this is an incredible step forward compared to where we used to be.
Absolutely.
You're welcome. Good job, Rob.
So I see no specific recommendation within this section, but I did see within the audits findings report that there is a requirement of completing the discussions with council, which I am assuming that this will be that conclusion. Obtaining evidence of council's approval for financial statements. Is that something, then, that we need to do here at this meeting on those financial statements that are within our report? And then the receipt of signed management representation letter that will come from management?
Madam Chair, yes. We've still got to sign the documents because it's the Director of Finance and myself that are responsible for that. But this council could pass a motion of receiving the audited financial statements from KPMG.
So I look to that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Lenora, thanks again so much for your work on this and for Derek as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on then to 6.1.2 regarding the recommendation from Centene News service trial. That will be finance admin. Will Counselor Martin?
I'll defer to Counselor Day.
Counselor Day? Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Martin was unable to attend the particular meeting, so I chaired in his absence. And we had an overview of the Centene News service that we commenced a trial with in 2012, and a review of the product by our communications manager suggested that due to the city's new in-house communications capacity, that Centene News be discontinued as the costs will be rising from $300 a month in March to $750 a month. It was recognized that the product is well-used by the provincial government, but at this time, it does not appear to meet the needs of local government to the same extent. And it was recommended, and I would so move, that a letter be sent to Centene News, thanking them for allowing us a trial of their product, but that the city no longer wishes to use the Centene News service with cancellation being immediate.
Second. Comments, discussion? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. 6.1.3 Report CAO and all department directors regarding the 2012 strategic priorities update.
Madam Chair, this report was put together at the request of council. And what it does is it summarizes all the initiatives, of which there are 11, that council pinpointed at the beginning of their term. It also is broken into tiers. The top tier are the ones that we should be completing first, with tier two completing second. I have also put in the report an easily reference in terms of where the initiatives is in terms of percentage complete, and each of them has the gauge indicating so that you just have to have a quick look at it and see where it is. I won't go into them because I think council's probably familiar with all the bits and pieces. However, I will bring to council's attention the table on page 180 of 219, where it outlines the budget amount.
That's not going to work for me.
Oh, sorry about that.
You need at the top of the report, whatever page is up there.
It's right at the end of the report, right on the signature page.
Signature page.
Page 10.
Page 10?
Yes, I've got it. So on that one, if you'd have a look at the table called Table 3, 2012 Strategic Priorities Budget, I was quite intrigued by the numbers that I pulled out of the budget, that when you look at how much has been allocated to each one of these priorities, it ends up at $651,000. Now again, remembering these are initiatives, and you need to do the research and planning aspects of them first before you can actually initiate any kind of work. And this is what this council has directed us do so that we know which direction we're going in, whether it's the transportation update or the land use bylaw update or the city communications. But I thought this was an interesting table in terms of putting it all together so you can see what this council has allocated to this very important task, which we should be well on the way of completing most of them before the end of this council's tenure. And the recommendation is receive this report for information. Thank you.
Looking for somebody on the motion?
So moved.
Second.
Comments, discussion? Counselor Day?
Thank you. I just wanted to comment that it's interesting to see it brought forward in a different light, looking at how much budget has been put to things and how complete we are, I think, is innovative ways for us to look at how we're doing on some of the strategic priorities. So I just want to make that comment that I think we're... It's a good way to look at it.
Back is stealing thunder. Counselor Collington?
Well, she stole my thunder too. No, it's really nice to see this coming back. You know, you do the strategic priorities a long time ago, and it's nice to kind of look at them again, say, yes, they still feel like priorities that we have. But really, my question is sort of, when are we planning a next kind of check-in point where we really look at the list and say, you know, what have we moved off the list? Is there anything that should be on this list that we're just not getting to? Are there any that with the passage of time are no longer priorities? Do we have a sense of when and how that might happen?
Through the chair, Counselor Collington. Yeah, actually, a very good question indeed, because actually, I was talking to the mayor about this before this. I think one of the areas where we should pinpoint, and I think that's one of the directions of this council, is what things, number one, what things in the planning sphere can be allocated to staff, delegated to staff, so that they don't have to keep coming back to council? That's one area that I think would really help this municipality a lot. Second would be to establish standards for parks and engineering. And I know engineering and public works are on this. But again, making it easier for us to move ahead in a known direction without having to come to council for that kind of direction. So those are a couple of the things that maybe we could consider out there in the near future.
July 8th sounds good.
That was 2015, you meant, right?
Any other comments, questions? Call the question, then. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. 6.2 Planning and Land Use Development Variance Permit, DVP-0313, Mr. Fisher, Mountain West Properties, 333 Whale Road.
Thank you, Your Worship. I couldn't resist that. This project had been before the Planning and Land Use Committee in council previously. They're requesting an amendment to the land use bylaw. The previous one regarding, was regarding a text amendment. This one is to increase the maximum allowable height of the building from 15 meters to 16, reduce the front yard setback from 13.3 to 4.5, reduce the required number of parking stalls for offices, multi-tenant use from 47 to 43, by permitting one per 30 meter squared of gross floor area to one per 33.8 meter squared of gross floor area, reducing the allowable parking stall width from 2.6 meters to 2.5, and the allowable depth of a 90-degree parking stall from 5.8 to 4.6 in order to accommodate 13 small car parking spaces. It will mean that the parking for the residents on top will remain regular-sized parking stalls. Through discussion, it was confirmed that the zone is site-specific, and a decision was made to handle the request variances as a separate application, as I mentioned off the top, to move the project along. The small car parking spaces are designated for the commercial parking area, and that the dedication required for the Wilford Road alignment across Whale Road has been dealt with. The idea of a car share space was broached, but the argument against was it would reduce parking further, and we addressed that in the recommendations. And it is the recommendation to council, and I so move, that the Development Variance Permit, DVP-0313, be authorized for issuance, which would have the effect on varying the maximum allowable height of the building, B, the minimum allowable front yard setback be reduced, C, the required number of parking stalls for offices, multi-tenant use, be reduced, the minimum allowable width of parking stall be reduced, the minimum allowable depth of a 90-degree parking stall be reduced for the property described as Lot 1, Section 1, Esq. Malt District Plan 8192, except part in Plan 24442, 333 Whale Road, and subject to the following conditions: that all undersized surface parking spaces are clearly marked as small car, parking to the satisfaction of the director of planning, and signage indicating no parking, fire lane must be installed within all onsite maneuvering aisles in locations satisfactory to the fire chief. Do I read the second one too now? Or do we get separately? Yeah, okay, good enough.
Seconded. Comments, discussion? Counselor Day?
Thank you. I will not be supporting this simply because I've recently been to a number of events in the Whale Road area, and there's very little parking. And I feel that we are quite likely to paint ourselves into a corner in a very important corridor of our town with regard to parking. There isn't a lot of on-street parking on Whale Road, and none in a very accessible pedestrian radius of the area. So that is my reason for not supporting it.
Counselor Martin?
Could I have planning comment on that, please?
Certainly. It was a recommendation that the development variance permit be approved based on the fact that, in our opinion, that area of Callwood is an area in transition. It is well-served by public transit. And in an area such as that, there's going to be probably some growing pains. That's been alluded to. probably some growing pains, as has been alluded to by Counselor Day. That being said, we feel that for this developer, it is appropriate to allow the parking variance because they are building a new development that's mixed-use, and the residents will likely have a one-car family per unit. They will be operating, or they will be leasing to a business that will likely have a lot of people using public transit. And as this area transitions, we expect it to be more like other central business districts that don't require as much parking as traditional suburban areas.
Anyone else? Call the question, all those in favor, opposed, motion has been carried.
Okay, the second recommendation to council, and I so move, that the car-share program be added and considered as part of the upcoming land use bylaw review.
Second. Comments, discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor, opposed, motion carried. Item 6.2.2, the development variance permit, application DVP-0413, Dave Lockyer, Board of Education, School District Number 62.
Thank you, your worship. This development variance permit is requested to vary the minimum required number of parking spaces for the new high school in Royal Bay from 184 to 128. There was some discussion amongst attendants within the meeting, a number of questions about some concerns that people didn't feel they had clarification until such time as the committee had discussed it, and they then confirmed that they did have clarification. So, we did express support for the application and felt that the supporting documentation was sufficient, was recognized that the school is a great asset for the city, and every effort should be made to provide opportunities for other forms of transportation. It was also noted that there will be additional parking stalls, as the school can expand to 1,200 students. An additional 52 parking stalls in the future would be added when it is expanded. However, many of the students arriving at school today are able to take the school bus to the school, and it was made very clear in the meeting that the drop-off area was what really needed to be accommodating, as opposed to parking, because the laws around driving these days for kids is not as easy as when you and I were young, that we got our driver's license the day we turned 16. They have to have somebody in the vehicle, so it felt that this, you know, could be supported. So it was recommended to council, and I so move, that development variance permit, DVP-0612, be authorized for issuance, and the following variance approved. Section 2.2.01 of the land use bylaw, Number 151, is varied such that the minimum number of parking stalls required to be provided at the new high school at Royal Bay be reduced from 184 stalls to 128. Subject to the following conditions, that the voluntary guidelines for the provision of bicycle parking facilities specified in 2.2.12 of the land use bylaw be followed as mandatory requirements by the school district, and I under, oh, no, forget it, that School District Number 62 entered into an agreement with the City of Colwood to provide an onsite two-way school bus drop-off pickup area to the satisfaction of the city engineer, and such drop-off area to be provided onsite off the public road, and designed to accommodate two-way traffic to allow buses to pass a stopped or stalled bus, as well as a minimum of six 15.2 meters, about 50 feet, bus spaces. The School District Number 62 entered into an agreement with the City of Colwood to provide a general vehicle student drop-off area for the satisfaction of the city engineer. It needs to be provided onsite, an accessible entrance to the school building separate from the school bus drop-off, and designed to accommodate a minimum of eight standard vehicles and two handy-dart-type vehicles. Pedestrian and psychopaths shall be provided from the adjacent public road and the footpath in perimeter park from the west of the site, where stairs are required to connect the perimeter park pathway due to steep grades. A bike trough shall be provided to allow cyclists to easily traverse the stairway. I don't see it there, but we also indicated for wheelchairs as well. And signage indicating no parking, fire lane must be installed with all onsite maneuvering aisles in locations satisfactory to the chief, fire chief.
Second. Counselor Logan, Counselor Day?
Thank you, worship. One question, and then a comment to staff. The parking, is there any way, and it may not be pertinent to the initial parking stalls being constructed, but any future parking stalls being constructed to prohibit the use of gravel? And have it paved or other type of service, and I say that knowing my experience at Belmont, and my three little angels will probably be going to Royal Bay, and if they're anything like their mother, a gravel parking lot is dangerous. So, and my school that I went to had a gravel parking lot, and it was an issue then. So I just want to make sure that we protect the neighborhood from that.
Through the chair, I believe the land use bylaw requires paved parking service?
Thank you. And then, my only comment is, I support all the subject twos, but I really am hesitant to support the variance. Living next to Belmont, I recognize the challenges that the school has on surrounding neighborhoods. There was an issue with slippage into our neighborhood that the city had to deal with, and Belmont was a lot closer to transit before they moved it out of the west shore town center. And also, the school district is still touting the possibility of having a theater. And if that's the case, then the additional parking stalls would be needed, and I know what the issue is with Isabel Reader and neighboring businesses, having to actually physically go out and patrol their parking lots when Pace is on, is an example, because Spencer doesn't have adequate parking. So, I appreciate more will be added later, but, you know, I think knowing kids, they're still going to be driving because it's cool, and I think the effect on the neighborhood surrounding there will be less than positive if we don't take care of it upfront. So I will not be supporting the variance.
Counselor Day?
Well, now it's my turn to have my thunder stolen, because I am concerned about the number of parking stalls available at the school. I note in, I've just had my third child graduate from Belmont, and the issues for parking have been sometimes just to come to the school for a parent-teacher interview. Parking is a major issue, and it's not because of children's parking issues or parents' parking issues, it's because the school is a big employment area, and they have a lot of employees working at that school, and their parking lots are filled. There were only about, you know, 10 visitor stalls in the back of Belmont's parking lot, and then some street-front parking. So that was a big issue, and also the unpaved student parking lot next to the skate park was a big issue for the students. And surprisingly, even though fewer and fewer kids are driving, there's lots of cars in those parking lots, they're quite full, and it is quite difficult. The issue, I think, in Royal Bay will be one of that spillover, because it would be very easy to simply park in the subdivision where the road is wide and adequate, and walk, you know, the block or two that it takes to get to school. So if we don't get the right number of parking spaces, it's very likely that the surrounding area will feel that impact. The other issue was, it was mentioned for accessibility. I'm not sure how the connection piece from the perimeter path to the school will be handled, as that is a fair distance through our perimeter park. And having that accessible is important for persons with disabilities or anyone else. Certainly, the 350-seat theater, black box theater, is still proposed at the school. So we do still need to have enough parking for that theater to be functional, whether they use it for Pace or some other theater project, there will need to be parking for that.
Counselor Harvey?
I'm going to pull a Counselor Martin and ask staff to comment on that, but I also would like to ask how many parking spaces are available at Belmont right now compared to what we're proposing here?
He just graduated, didn't he? Long ago? Within years.
Well, I'll start by saying that by no means do I condone it, but it was considered an art form, a good donut in that gravel parking lot at Belmont when I went there. Certainly, once again, this is another area in transition. I could speak at length about current planning thought and changing philosophies surrounding parking. I could talk for quite a while, actually. As Counselor Luca knows, there's books that have been written about that thick.
Read his digest version, please.
Sure. But I'll focus on one point, and that is, what we're talking about here is the protection of free parking. At our initial meeting with the school, where we challenged them to consider pay parking, because that would change the dynamic, okay? You'd see less people driving to school, you'd also see them valuing the cost of that parking space. Because we call it free parking, but there's no such thing. Someone will pay for that parking space. In this case, it's the school board. That cost is going to be passed on to the overall cost of developing a school, and therefore, the taxpayer will be paying. Some of those taxpayers, children's, children, will be the ones that are biking and taking the bus. So in a sense, their families will be subsidizing those who drive a car. So in that sense, it's a very inequitable situation, where we try to have free parking seen as a right. And in an area of transition like Colwood, where we're going from a very much suburban landscape to a urban landscape, we're going to have these debates and growing pains, for sure. And we're going to have to put up no parking signs, residents only around this high school, for sure. But the question is, do we want to have a city that's going to be hamstrung and tied to this suburban mentality when it comes to free parking? Or do we want it to be that sophisticated urban center with green space, of course, which around the world have, they don't have free parking? The value of the parking is passed on to the user through pay parking. So that's what I would focus on in this issue. The second question about parking in Belmont, unfortunately, I don't have that information in front of me, but I certainly could get that. Thanks.
Any other comments, questions? Counselor Cullington?
Thank you. Just to echo a couple of the things that Mr. Borhill said, I did attend that committee meeting, and we absolutely recognized that there was going to be a 350-seat theater there, and the importance of making sure that we were providing parking for that, as well as for the schooltime use. I think it's really important, when we look at our official community plan, and we said, you know, we flipped the transportation hierarchy on its head, we said we need to be first and foremost pedestrian-friendly, cycle-friendly, bus-friendly, and then we get down to the lowly single-occupant vehicle. And if we're going to make that come true, then I think we have to make some brave decisions as council. But we also have to kind of look to the future and make sure we're working in that direction. I think another important part of that discussion was around, how do we make this cycle-friendly? How do we really work with that PC transit to make sure that we've got bus transportation, not just during the school hours, but also in the evening for the theater as well? And yes, it's hard to do at the beginning when you kind of, you know, you've got the school and not so much happening else around it, but I think it's really important to get it in as we go. Another element of the transition piece is that, you know, initially, there's going to be a kind of a bit of shuffling out, but some, if there is any overload parking, it will go into the undeveloped area. But it was pointed out that as that area builds up, you've got more and more people actually walking to that school. So hopefully, again, the kind of the need for car parking will go down. And it was, you know, the point about cost, that this is an ongoing cost of the school district, and, you know, do we want to put our dollars into parking spaces or into education? And I would certainly support the education option on that one. So I will be supporting the recommendation.
Anyone else? Okay, Counselor Martin?
I don't disagree with anything that Counselor Cullington said.
There's a but there.
However... Well, the question is, I guess for me, is, I agree that as the neighborhood grows and gets closer, that it's easier to not have as many parking spots. But at the beginning, it seems to me like you would want to have more, and then we can consolidate down as that neighborhood continues to grow, so that it becomes, I mean, my biggest fear, I guess, is we drop this school in the middle of nowhere at the beginning, and then we also provide no parking for them. And it doesn't seem to, it seems to me that it would make more sense to have more parking now, with the idea that it eventually disappears down the road as the neighborhood grows out. And I'm just, and I guess I'm trying to understand the logic of minimizing parking right now, and I guess I'm looking, again, back to planning to try and explain that to me.
I'll pass the book on to Rob when I'm done.
Certainly. I got share a shorter version, actually. Well, I certainly agree with Counselor Martin that parking will be of a greater demand in the beginning, but the fact of the matter is, all of the students that are attending this school will have the option to take a bus. Obviously, they'll somehow have personal life requirements, such as skating practice and whatnot, that requires them to juggle a schedule and drive to school. But in very few instances do we have a land use where they have that option that is already provided free. The school board is saying is, this is what they need to operate a school. So the city would be saying, we know better than the school district, you should have more cars than what your standards allow. Once again, basically socializing this idea of free parking, which isn't necessarily going to provide benefit to the community, because we're going to have all the negative impacts associated with single-car occupancy drivers. We're going to have school buses that are less well-used, and there's going to cause several different issues. In terms of staging parking there, the fact is that to prep a parking lot is not of itself an inexpensive proposition. You have to provide a roadbed, you have to compact it to 95 per acre, the asphalt goes in, so there's a big cost upfront, and that can't easily be capitalized over, say, 10 or 15 years while this area builds out. Secondly, the people who are using that parking will probably see it as a right, and it'll be difficult to take it away from folks, such as teachers and students down the road when the school builds out. So that's what, I would say, there's two issues with that idea of phasing, so.
Just one further thing, Counselor Martin, that Ian should probably talk on, and that's the bicycle.
Covered.
Covered barque. I didn't elaborate on it, although when I was reading the recommendations, that's where I was going to go, but it's quite extensive. You'll want to ride your bike. I'll let you explain.
Certainly. The school district is really excited about this being one of the best-built high schools in the world. Honestly, that's what they're putting forward. And that includes some of the best bicycle parking for any secondary school in the world. So to that end, they've agreed to making our world-leading bicycle parking requirements. We're up there with Copenhagen, when you look at our voluntary parking requirement, bicycle parking requirements. They're going to take those as mandatory. So what that means is there's going to be bicycle parking that's protected from the elements. There's also going to be secure bicycle parking for a significant amount of bicycles inside the building, which is very different from the situation at Belmont.
One more, Counselor Martin?
Well, it's not a question, I guess it's just more of a concern, because I also know that, you know, not only are we dealing with the school district, but we're dealing with West Shore Park and Rack. I mean, there's, I don't know how much discussion has actually occurred with that. I know, for example, the skateboard park the Counselor Day brought up is definitely going to be moved. It hasn't been decided where it's going to be moved yet, but it theoretically could be moved down to this school, which would, again, add more stress to parking situations. So I guess I'm just, I mean, I'm struggling with... So I guess I'm just, I mean, I'm struggling with this one, just because it's... My biggest fear is what I've always commented after I've seen a development is, good grief, why didn't they build enough parking? Like, you always seem to step back afterwards and go, this is crazy. Why didn't they think of this ahead of time, that we need this amount of parking? And I would hate to be building out this entire project and then to step back and go, oh, you know, we could have had 150 stalls or 100 and whatever, but instead, we've got 110, and we're struggling, and we've got complaints all through the neighborhood because kids are parking all over the place. That's my concern.
But there is an additional 52 that are on the slate that can be added in.
And this is, their numbers are also based on provincial modeling of other high schools that have been constructed primarily, the one up in Port Albertini. So the numbers aren't just pie in the sky. They have utilized some modeling that they have.
And sorry, just to, I'm sorry, Counselor Day, just to find, the final question I have is, you know, one of the things we want with a school is to encourage utilization, right? We want people to utilize that space as much as possible. Does having less parking space encourage or discourage that? And has there been any studies regarding that?
If I could clarify the question, are you talking about site utilization in terms of area of the land that's being built upon?
Down building.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, use of the school, use of the field.
Right.
You know, people wanting to be around there.
Certainly, we expect that the additional parking requirements beyond the ministry requirements would restrict sport fields, other areas that would be potentially used for landscaping and whatnot at the school. We don't know, because of the way that they're doing the design-build, how exactly it would impact site utilization. But our expectation is that it would be to the detriment of the site utilization to require this, because we're talking about surface parking here.
Sorry, I meant it the other way, though. I'm talking about if you have soccer fields and you don't have enough parking, does that discourage people from actually coming and using the fields because you don't have enough parking because you can't find parking to get to the fields? That's my question. I understand what you're saying, that that's going to use up space and we're not going to have as much fields, but I guess I'm asking the opposite of that question. Yeah, it is.
And I would say double up.
Yeah.
Counselor Day? Ian, you've got another answer?
Certainly, always.
So I would gotcha.
Now, I can't say that I'm a parking expert or guru yet, but my experience has been, and certainly this is borne out with the neighboring municipality at Langford, that destination uses, such as a child's soccer game or a friend's soccer game, is something that someone's going to go to regardless of the parking situation, unless it is quite drastic. As has been alluded to, people will make choices such as carpooling to go to those destination uses. The uses that generally suffer because of a lack of parking are the kind of uses that are convenience uses, such as the 7-Eleven on the way home. As you drive by, you're thinking, well, I need to pick up some milk, drive, as I drive by, see that the parking lot's full, I'll keep driving, that kind of thing. But when you're talking about school plays, other expected uses at this site, my professional expectation is that a restricted parking situation will cause a positive impact on the users as opposed to a negative one.
That's it. Counselor Day, you have another comment?
Okay, thank you. I have to respectfully disagree, and it's with great respect, because I do understand that we're trying to transition to a different way of living. And I really wish that the school district would implement the same program for the teachers that they implement for all the kids at UVIC and Camosin, which is that you pay for your bus pass with your tuition and everything else. You can't go there without it. If we could reduce the teachers' parking by 30%, I'm sure it would make a big difference. But not seeing that sort of initiative coming forward, the reality in our community, if you drive down Goldstream Avenue on a workday next to the priory, you will find cars parked all along Goldstream Avenue where the parking is free, avoiding the pay parking at the priory. You will see cars parked in Callwood on Goldstream Avenue, long-term, parked all over our tree roots and not as I would prefer that it was, because those cars are necessary to them be, for whatever reason, the transit system doesn't work for every instance. I think we do want to increase cycle options. I think that kids will respond to that. I think that kids will use the bus. We have a duplicated system as it is with the school bus system, as well as BC Transit operating, going to many of the same places. But when my son broke his wrist and we had to go for x-rays, I was faced with a question, now, where do I want to go for my x-rays? Do I want to go to VGH, where I'm going to have to pay for parking, and/or do I want to go to St. Anthony's Clinic, where I can park for free? Do I want to go shop downtown in Victoria where I'll have to hunt for a parking spot, pay, and worry about the time? Or would I rather go park where I know I don't have to worry? I know what wins out. That's why Mayfair Mall is doing well. That's why Uptown is doing well, because it isn't a perfect system, and we don't have the answer. Some of the answers are out there, and I think facilitating the bike parking is a great idea, because kids can do that. People are not probably going to do that in the next 10 years to go to the theater. Probably not here. Might happen in Copenhagen, but it probably won't happen here. And I know for sure that if I have a soccer game with one of my kids, and it's across town, and there's not enough parking, I can't always carpool or organize or even know. And there's very few locations, other than the University of Victoria, where you would go to a soccer field, and you wouldn't find free ample parking, at least sufficient for the two teams to park, and probably one player, one car per player with whatever family comes with them. So I think, you know, realistically, in this transition time, which I agree, we're definitely trying to transition, there's got to be some smart ways of laying it out so that it is a welcoming destination, one that doesn't say, no, we have no place for you here as soon as you pull up with your car. But one that says, if you can't come here every day, isn't there a better way? You know, whether you want to ride your bike, or you want to, you know, take transit and get there. Those are things we can facilitate to make a difference. But I think we need more parking.
Anyone else? Call the question, all those in favor of the motion? Those opposed? One, two, three. Motion has been passed. Carried.
Boy, it's nice to have neighbors.
It doesn't happen very often, does it?
No, I like it.
6.2.3, Strata Title Conversion, the 310 Whale Road.
Mayor, I'm going to need to excuse myself due to perceived conflict.
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Counselor, Lucans has excused herself on any discussion in this project in that there is a perceived conflict of interest, as Mr. Wonsborough worked on her campaign. So we are at the recommendation. Counselor Cullington chaired while this was happening. I was just going to say, do you want to lead with introduction?
It's going to be very short and sweet, and perhaps it won't have quite as much discussion as the last item had. This is an application under the Strata Title Property Act, pardon me, Strata Property Act, to include an existing commercial building within an existing Strata Plan. It's something that's been on the books for a long time. We've been expecting it to come forward. It was recommended to council and I so move that Strata Title Conversion Application ST-01-13 be approved, and the mayor and chief administrative officer authorized to execute the Strata Plan.
Second.
Comments, questions? Anyone? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Wonsborough. 6.3, Parks, Recreation and Culture, Counselor Day leading this one, on restoration of a park area adjacent to Briarwood.
Thank you. The committee reviewed a report from the city engineer, Mr. Baxter, with regard to a use permit on Pelican Drive. It was acknowledged that the city's permit was not explicit enough with regarding the expectations around the work and the restoration that was to take place through the municipal park. There were pictures presented showing the extent of invasive growth which had been removed and the exposure of soil in the park. And there was a considerable discussion about what was the best way to remedy the issue, as it's a fairly remote stretch of park on the very far edge of Callwood, more of a buffer, really, than a formal park. And what the responsibility of the landowner who accessed the city park to get through to their lot, it's a very narrow strip of land, and they drove a large piece of equipment through the park up to access their own property. And there was a range of options that were considered as to what would be best to do, whether there were the use of the chips that we provide for free to residents could be put down, planting of potentially natural species and/or fir trees, trees planted somewhere else in another park as compensation for the damage that had been done, and/or a cash contribution. There was a suggestion made that the city has high-park priority areas, and that this is not really one, so letting nature take its course would be an efficient and cost-effective solution. And it was recommended to council, and I would so move, that the property owners at 401 Pelican Drive be required to pay $250 towards the purchase of new trees or shrubs to be placed in Callwood Parks in order to fill the requirement to reinstate the affected park area.
Second.
Comments, discussion? Counselor Cullington?
Thank you. Through you a question to Mr. Baxter. Did you have an opportunity to talk to the owner at 401 Pelican?
Yes, I did. I had a meeting with him recently, and he felt that the sum of $250 towards planting a tree in his neighborhood was an excellent solution, and he was quite happy with that.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I have one to sta... Go ahead.
Thank you. I just have one question. The motion says in Callwood Parks, but if the intent was to have it in that section of park as part of a...
No.
Was that not the case, that we're going to plant the tree there?
I thought that the location was left somewhat open. That was my memory of how the motion was made.
The discussion centered around possibly close to his neighborhood. There is a park in the neighborhood that really could benefit, that is a more formalized park area than this is. So the committee suggested we could choose that park, or we could choose a different park. We left it up to the engineer and the Parks Department to determine where the best placement is, and certainly in consultation with the owner whose donation is going to allow that to happen. I think it's great if Parks wants to say, you know, this is the tree that your money was able to park, to put in the park. That's a good thing.
And I'll just ask, we talked earlier on the setting up of standards and that sort of thing. Mr. Pease, would this not be something, you know, that could be as part of a standards? I mean, if the fellow had a permit to go in and do his yard and whatever, there's an expectation that there should be remediation, it shouldn't be a second time before council and whatever, just do it.
Agreed. It's, again, it's set of standards, but the thing was here that had our permit been a bit more directive, this issue wouldn't be before us. It's just one of those things that does happen from time to time. But I do agree that the more standards you have, it's easier for staff to make these kind of decisions.
So I know you got that on the agenda, so you can add this to it.
Yes, after I've retired.
Call the question, then, all those in favor?
I just wanted to clarify that there was, in fact, no native vegetation to be restored here. It was all invasives.
Yeah.
So it was an unusual situation.
Anyways, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Item 6.3.2, Letter of Intent to Assist with Reduction of Dog Stools Fowling Callwood Public Parks. Now, where the heck is Kyle Wells? Counselor Day?
All right, thank you. There was a report regarding the letter of intent from Eagle Rise and Glenview Animal Hospital, having offered to install up to 10 posts with dispensers and signage on the posts with bags for those dispensers in the City of Callwood's parks to assist with the reduction of dog feces in Callwood Parks for three years. The City of Callwood Public Works Department would be responsible for installation and maintenance of the dispensers with logoed doggie bags supplied by Eagle Rise and Glenview Animal Hospital. The installation locations of the dispensers would be, three at Callwood Creek Park entrances, two at Havenwood Park Trail entrances, two at La Toria Creek Trail entrances, two at Esquimalt Lagoon, one at each end of Ocean Boulevard, and also one at Lookout Lake. The community was very appreciative of Eagle Rise and Glenview Animal Hospital and their community-spirited initiative, and they recommended to council, and I would so move, that the City of Callwood enter into an agreement with Eagle Rise and Glenview Animal Hospitals Limited to allow Eagle Rise and Glenview Animal Hospital to donate to the City of Callwood 10 dispensers, poles, and doggie bags, with Eagle Rise and Glenview Animal Hospital Limited contact information and logo for three years to be installed by the city in Callwood Creek Park, Havenwood Park, La Toria Creek Trail, Lagoon, and Lookout Lake.
Second.
Counselor Lucans?
Thank you. I think this is just a great community initiative that I'm grateful that has come before us, and hopefully, we can support it and engage in it. I just think it's a great opportunity to get us working together. We know we have many more parks, and I know everybody has a limited budget, so maybe it's an opportunity we can put out even to other clinics, vet clinics, to participate in. It's a great way for them to get their name and their reputation out there. Thank you.
Counselor Harvey?
I agree wholeheartedly with Counselor Lucans. This is a fantastic initiative. The only question I have is what happens after three years?
I think we'll need a new, a renewal of our agreement, either with the same providers or perhaps we'll be looking for a new supporter.
Okay, great, thank you. I was just wanting to make sure that the cost didn't transfer over to the City of Callwood after three years, and that's not the intention here. Perfect, thank you.
Counselor Cullington?
Thank you. I also think this is a wonderful initiative, and Mayor Hamilton, you mentioned where's Kyle Wells. I just wondered if it would be useful to ask our communications director to...
Well, he phones me after every meeting.
To prepare a short, happy media release to say thank you to Eagle Rise and Glenview Animal Hospital, stick it up on our lovely new website.
They've got it in the doggie bag.
Oh, and I'm very glad that Counselor Day said dog bags, not bog bags.
Any other comments or questions?
I know Eagle Rise and Glenview, they are one, and Dr. Chris Col... I know Eagle Rise and Glenview, they are one and Dr. Chris Collison and colleagues down there are quite enthusiastic about the opportunity to share in this. And I've spoken to them at length and it will be nice to see these up. We've been long asked for the opportunity to have those, so let's hope that it is something that we can see more of around the neighborhood.
Counselor Lugans, before I call the question?
After the money I've spent there in the last two weeks, they can probably put up one in Maestro's Park, so I'll let them know that.
I wasn't going to make a comment, but yeah. Yeah, I think that one at Lookout—
I think that one at Lookout Lake should have his name on it. No, I'm thinking the, you know, green space there, yeah. Got Maestro—
They're called Maestro bags.
Anyways, call the question, with all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Six point, three point, three, use of raw log chip, or raw wood chips in parks and natural areas and trails. Counselor Day?
Thank you. The Parks Foreman addressed the committee with a report highlighting the benefits of using raw or arborist's wood chips for natural areas, parks, and trails to assist with suppressing weeds and improving the soil. The committee agreed that it makes a lot of sense to put the chips down and gives the look of being maintained in areas that otherwise sometimes don't get that much attention. There was some negative feedback has been received through the city, through residents who thought that the product could be a fire hazard. And it was suggested that the city needs a plan of where to use the wood chips along with native plant species and also to keep track of where we do have the chips and how long they've been in place. The idea has been refined to be applicable to residential areas that are more visible and a plan is being developed through parks to keep track of where the wood chip locations are. It was recommended to council and I would so move that the Parks Crew continue to use raw wood chips in parks and natural areas where it's advantageous for improvement and restoration and that the city engineer bring forward an inventory and plan to the Parks Recreation and Culture Committee on the use of the wood chips by October of 2013.
Second.
Counselor Lugans?
Thank you, Worship. I'm happy that we're starting to narrow down the location that we're going to put these wood chips. And I only say that because I think in natural areas it's appropriate, but on our streetscape, like on Whale Road, maybe along the island highway where we're going to be landscaping, that type of material is inappropriate. Maybe the finer, more professional looking material is more appropriate in those areas that we're trying to highlight, as opposed to parks where the diameter is absolutely appropriate and beneficial. So I appreciate the standards, thank you.
Counselor Cullington?
Thank you. I just wanted to comment that this was a really good initiative that our Parks Foreman undertook and it was really nice. I actually learned a lot at the press committee in terms of the benefits of the use of the wood chips. It's a resource that's free to us. The way he's done it has actually saved the Parks Crew quite a lot of money and time in maintenance and is really beneficial in terms of improving the soils, mulching around the trees so they retain more moisture and stuff like that. So it was quite nice to hear of the kind of long list of benefits of doing this. So that was, I think, a very helpful report.
And this is another one where we can add to the standards.
Just a question to Counselor Day with respect to the question about it being a fire hazard. It doesn't say what the answer was to that.
I believe the answer, the engineer might be able to provide a better answer, but my take from our discussions was that it actually helps to retain a great deal more moisture in the soil where it's being used, but—
Yeah, the only thing I would add to that is that bark mulch is a lot more flammable because of the finer texture and the wood chips less so.
Thank you. Call the question, all those in favor? Wait, wait, wait. Okay. Counselor Harvey?
I'm not in favor. Oh, Counselor Harvey has received.
I just have a question with respect to consultation and whether or not the city has entered into a dialogue with Mr. Cutray in particular because Blue Sky Place is actually mentioned. He's going to sell his lots there and it's the frontage of his development, so I'm just wondering if the city's actually had a conversation with the developer.
No, we don't, we don't have—these wood chips have been used extensively in the city and if we had a conversation with every landowner that did butts, it would take months of staff time.
And I can appreciate that, but just because his property is actually specifically identified in this report, and I'm sure he's probably likely going to read it and get maybe a little upset that we haven't had a conversation with him about this.
Sure, I can talk to him, yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Day?
Sorry, I think the reference there is, it's kind of something that came up a little bit unrelated, but what happened was where on Blue Sky, there was some invasive species growing on the median in an effort to make it better. Our public works have put the chips down to help suppress the invasive species. We had a request from a resident asking if we would not also please put some plantings in rather than just wood chips. So it's a little bit of a different issue in that there's a request from a resident, not a developer, but from a resident asking if we would plant on the Boulevard and not own, do something more than just wood chips. So I think from an invasive plant standard, the wood chips are a good first step in that the first thing you have to do is get the blackberries and the broom out of there before any planting could take place anyways. And then there's the next question of what is the next step?
You good?
I was just going to add to that, that that's part of the plan and inventory is so that we, you know, we don't just remove the invasives and put down wood chips, that we also look at what's going to go in there as well. So that's the whole purpose behind, or part of the purpose, I should say, behind that plan and inventory.
Okay, thank you. Call the question, then, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. On to six point, four, Protective Services Regarding Rock the Shores Event July 13th and 14th, 2013.
Thank you, Worship. At our committee meeting, we received an update from the RCMP on Rock the Shores and where Counselor Lugans is going to be shaking her booty, I'm sure, on July the 14th and 15th. Planning is coming along very, very well for the event and the promoters have been extremely helpful and forthright in their desire to help study along and cover costs for policing and any other city, city costs such as municipal enforcement. There was a concern at the committee that we want to make sure that any funds that are received from the promoter to cover municipal enforcement and other services go back into the budgets from which staffing costs came out of, so not hinder future, future events and municipal enforcement activities during the summer. So the committee recommended and I so move that the Director of Finance be requested to ensure that when remuneration is received by the city for the 2013 Rock the Shores event, that these funds be applied to the individual departmental budget accounts in direct reimbursement for costs incurred.
Second. Comments, questions? Counselor Cullington?
Thank you, just very quickly, very much support the principle of this. I was just sort of trying to imagine what happens afterwards when we get the bill in to kind of make sure that, you know, we, how do we kind of know that Department X gets this amount and that we don't, we don't have departments vying for who gets the available funds?
Well, the city, the city, that's a great question, Counselor Cullington. I believe the city does break it down in terms of its costs from municipal enforcement to fire to the RCMP and will bill, if I'm not mistaken, under those specific headings and Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, because we are required to itemize our specific costs related to the event.
So in answer through the chair to Counselor Logan, actually, all the money's coming to administration. No, he is correct.
Good, I just didn't want any fights between the police and the fire department or anything like that. Thanks.
Anybody else? Counselor Martin?
I guess I still do have the same concern, though. Like, I agree with this completely in principle, so I'm not going to vote against it, but I guess, I wonder about how, for example, let's say Capital City Center, you know, they, we end up having to spend a lot more money on a building inspector and the income that's coming in that's being created by that building inspector through that revenue, is that going back to that department, like, or does that just get dropped into general revenue and we just have to sort of figure it out after the fact?
No, through the chair to Counselor Martin, no, the way that one works is that we actually don't have a building inspector on that job and when we do, all the money that comes in through the permit process goes to paying that inspector that we have. It's a building inspector level three because of it's a complex building.
So it's recorded through the budget that way?
Correct, yes.
Just as long as it is, as long as we're staying consistent, that's all I'm concerned about. The Director of Engineering looks, are you thinking something completely else?
Well, that means the money's not coming in.
It is now.
A question that I have is around this event and others like it, do these event coordinators come in contract directly with the city or is this sort of an expense that's added out there? What role are we playing in it? Like, is it a necessary component? If policing's already there and doing the job, what's the role that bylaw takes?
Well, I think there's two, there's three issues here. One is the RCMP. The RCMP have to be there because there's always the chance of something going awry, Vancouver being one of the spots where things really went wild. The other one, of course, fire this year has put in a figure of $6,100 and the reason for that is that they are manning a emergency center and they want to be able to respond to an emergency extremely quickly, so they're going to have staff on, literally on standby. Unlike waiting for a fire to happen in a residential community, this is different. We've got a population coming in of probably between 6,000 to 15,000 people, so they have to be prepared and have to respond immediately. In terms of bylaw, the cost for bylaw is about $5,000. And again, this is to support the police. The police will be looking at what comes under their jurisdiction. They will send bylaw off to think, to look at things like parking, look at traffic enforcement, and also probably people that bring in alcohol, our bylaw officers will be able to handle that. So it's a myriad of levels of response. However, what concerns me a bit is that what we don't want is our expenses to be so high that it's going to chase these sort of organizations away from the way shore because they say, hey, it's costing us too much, especially if they're forced to bring on their own services to replace us, although the police will always have to be there.
And I know this particular event coordinator and have worked with him downtown and I know that he's, you know, very committed to ensuring that the event's safety and all of that and has, you know, employed security firms aside from. So I'm just wanting to be sure that we are not creating hardships or adding in to expenses and that sort of thing, that we want to encourage these folks to come here. They've gone from one day to two. There's talk about having two different festivals that I've heard of, that there'll be one that's along this line and another in a different genre of music and that sort of thing. So I want to see it happening more often and not moved away out there, so just to be careful. The principle of this is it makes sense, though. Anybody else? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Bylaws. Bylaw number 1509, final reading, land use bylaw number 151, 1989 text amendment, CD21 zone text amendment for 333 Whale Road.
Move final?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Did you get that opposition? Motion carried. Bylaw number 1507, first and second readings, Colwood bylaw, or Colwood Land Use Bylaw number 151, 1989 text amendment number 131, RM 6 Zone 474 Goldstream.
Move introduction.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
Move second. Second, second.
Comments, questions? Discussion? Counselor Martin?
I just want to make sure, this motion doesn't, I didn't find it anywhere, but this doesn't, motion doesn't have anything to do with the tax exemption that it requested?
This is just the reason.
Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Bylaw number, yeah, we're done there. Bylaw number 1467, final reading, Colwood Main Sewer Locate, Local Area Service Bylaw.
Move final. Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Bylaw number 1468, final reading, Colwood Central Sewer Local Area Services Establishment.
Move final?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Bylaw number 1510, final reading, Colwood Main Sewer Local Area Service Bylaw.
Move final. Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Bylaw number 1511, final reading, Colwood West Sewer Local Area Service Establishment.
Move final. Second, final.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Motion to move in camera?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
We are done.